See, uh, election.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Commissioner Hurley is going to give our invocation and pledge the flag.
Delard, once again, we're very thankful for another year. The new opportunities that it brings to us, the new challenges that lie ahead, and the new people that have come aboard our city to try to help us make changes for a positive, for a better community for all. We're thankful for the things in the past, and we look forward to joining the things in the past. It's accomplished so much with what we're continuing to do in the future. We ask that you bless our meeting tonight, help us make correct moves, and help us make decisions that'll profit us all. We ask that you keep your hand on our men and women in the armed forces and those in our public safety. And we ask all of these things in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We have no proclamations or presentations tonight, so we can move on to the consent agenda. Two items are placed on the consent agenda. Did expedite the meeting. Commissioner staff wish discussing item procedure as follows. Pull the items from the consent agenda, vote on the remaining ones with one roll call vote, discuss each pulled item, and vote by roll call. Do we have any items that need to be pulled?
None for me.
B1 and C4.
We need to pull 4C1.
Well, that's right. We need to have, to have pulled some, can we pull 4C1?
Yeah, we need to pull 4C1.
All for them.
Yeah, not to consider 4C1. And Elise wants to talk about B1 and 4C4.
Okay, yeah, not B1. I had mentioned C1, but since it's pulled, that's fine. So it's just gonna, um, 4C4.
All right, hey, Elise, just for clarification, did you want 4C1? Or, I thought you said B1, or did you say C1?
Said C1, but since you're pulling it tonight, we don't have to discuss that right now.
Okay, so the only one you want pulled is C4?
That's correct.
Okay, and, and, and 4C1 needs to be pulled.
Any, anything else?
Yeah, and I have, um, 4B3 and, um, 4C2. Just had a quick question on that one.
Okay.
Move to approve all remaining items, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner Christian?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Mayor Robuck?
Yes. Okay, so that leaves us with four...
B3.
B3, okay.
Introduce and ask to be read by title only.
Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Leesburg, Florida, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute Task Order Number 10 with Joan Edmonds to update the southwest area water master plan and providing an effective date.
Move for approval.
Second.
I just asked to pull this, and I understand this is the, um, is the project to do a plan to study for the future water, the water master plan there. And I'm, and I kind of have it related a little bit to 4C4, too. Where we're, there's, I think in 4C4, we've got a map, there's some drawings of where we're gonna, is it 4C4?
4C6. No, I'm sorry.
At 4C4, we have the easements for some, for utilities there as well. And so this goes back to my, to the bicycle path, recreational path thing, is that, and I, I know we don't have any plans right now to do anything, but as we're talking about doing easements that are gonna go, go to southwest Leesburg into the 470 corridor, I would just ask that we have some consideration given to multiple uses of those easements. If we're gonna do a utility easement, if there's a way that we can incorporate into that or reserve in those easements, the right to have recreational use for...
Okay, this is a water master plan to determine how we're gonna get water.
I understand, but, but it's gonna have to get, it's gonna have to get out there, right? Is that what we're gonna be talking about, how we're gonna get it out there?
Yes.
So, it's, we're talking about...
I'm wondering if you're trying to link to the other easements.
Well, I'm just saying, whenever we're talking about doing any kind of easements, and here we're talking about doing a design plan that's gonna take water out, out that way, right?
Potentially, we don't know.
So I'm just saying, as we do that, if we...
We wanna keep space for a bike, okay.
Just taking consideration that if we want to ever get recreational traffic bicycles and stuff, which I think would be a great idea to the villages, particularly...
To do it now.
To do it now, as we, as we consider that in any kind of a plans or studies that we're doing when we do easements for utilities or whatever, whatever it might be out there, so.
Can you do that, DC? Can you do the easement? Can you have enough space for the back? Can the back lane be on top of the easement or no?
Yeah, it's not really a too big a deal to put a, a bike lane or a sidewalk on top of an easement. It becomes a little more problematic if you put a building or you put road construction. So I don't, I think it's a compatible use.
Right, and I think, you know, in the way I, in my mind, I could see potentially, it's like, do we turn left here or right here? It's like, well, if we do, you know, it makes sense to go left, for it's just a utility, but we could go right, and it's, might cost a little bit more, but we could do the bicycle there. And, and, you know, just to have some thought given to it, to make that extension as well, so.
So should, so should we come up with, I know it's all subject a little bit, but should we come up with a plan, kind of a map, while we're doing this, so we kinda have some idea?
At this stage, that would need to get weaved in to however we figure out how best to get water down there.
Right.
So, it's something you just need to keep in mind.
Just to think about it, that's, yeah, nothing, no action or anything, but just to give that consideration, I think.
Okay, so we're gonna think about that? Great.
Right, I mean, I, okay.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, I need to, it's important, so. Okay, uh, any discussion from the public on this? Okay, more discussion from the commission? Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Christian?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Mayor Robuck?
Yes. Okay, it brings us to 4C1, which we are tabling.
Yep.
Do we need to take action to do that?
Just a motion to table.
Okay.
Move to table.
Second.
Any discussion? Discussion from the public? Roll call.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner Christian?
Yes.
Mayor Robuck?
Yes. Okay, uh, 4C3?
Two.
Two, 4C2.
I'll introduce. Has to be read by title only.
Excuse me. Staff recommends approval of the proposed temporary changes to the rental rates at the Rogers Park Pavilion and the Cultural Arts Building, CAB, during Venetian Gardens Phase 3, effective beginning October 1st, 2018.
Now, move to approve.
Second.
So, um, I, so I asked to pull this and not to go through every item on here. I assume we have, um, the rates comparable to other facilities and other places. But I did note, when I looked at this, at the splash pad, and I just wanted to see if I'm understanding this correctly, a city resident can reserve the whole splash pad for $25? Is that, is that right? For two hours?
That's correct.
And block out the whole pad and exclude anybody else's use, except for whoever they've invited into the splash pad?
For two hours, is that, that's the policy, I believe.
Travis Reimer, Director Recreation. Yes, that is true, but it's only open from, for reservations from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. So, and we close at 6:00, so it's for after-hours use, so it doesn't exclude people from...
For excluding everybody else in town from using this one.
No, it's, we have the specific hours you can...
Okay, okay, good.
All right, another man, book it.
Yeah.
For the commission.
All right, that was good, that was, okay. I didn't wanna see that we were excluding a thousand kids for a little party there or something during the, during the day. That was my only thought, my only comments on that.
Any other comments? Comments from the public? Roll call.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner Christian?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Mayor Robuck?
Yes. Now, into, uh, 4C4.
I'll introduce, ask to be read by title.
Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Leesburg, Florida, granting an easement to the Southeast Wildwood Water Conservation Authority and providing an effective date.
Move for approval. Second.
Any discussion?
The reason I asked this to be pulled, Al, is this the Canal Street?
Yeah, no, I, I, this is, I labeled it wrong. The, um, the easements are correct. This is the, this is the Turnpike Plan. I, I just labeled it wrong. And essentially, this is a, an easement, I believe it's about a 50-foot wide easement. Basically, it goes from the northwest corner of the 470 property, kinda all the way down the Turnpike, takes a right, and then brings it into the Turnpike Plant. And I, and in processing it, I thought Canal instead of Turnpike.
Okay, can, correct.
Everything is correct in there. You probably need to amend a little resolution where I mentioned Canal and, and make that Turnpike, and then everything's correct.
Move into amena.
Second.
Discussion on the... Discussion from the public, roll call.
Mr. Christian?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Mayor Robuck?
Yes. Uh, further discussion on the...
Yeah, and this goes back to my comment on the other item about the bicycle path. If I look at this, and I, and looking at the 470 property and the Turnpike there, that would seem to be, you know, without, without any real plan in place, that that would be one of the prime places that you would want to put possibly a bicycle lane through, uh, through there, going through the villages, maybe. And so, is, is this something that is, this, would this easement be exclusive to prevent us from doing that? Is there a way that we can somehow reserve it so that we have the ability to do it in the...
Well, I think this is going to be going through property the villages is going to develop, and they're gonna wanna site plan their property accordingly. They may wanna put, uh, bike paths and rec facilities somewhere else besides this.
Right, okay.
This is property they're going to purchase, correct?
Correct.
Oh.
So this is just an easement until the contract?
Until the contract, yeah, okay, got you. All right.
Okay, any discussion from the public? Roll call.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner Christian?
Yes.
Mayor Robuck?
Yes. Okay, that brings us through the consent agenda. So we're into, uh, 4...
Five.
5A? 5A1? Lost my... Here.
I'll introduce. Has to be read by title only.
And ordinance of the City of Leesburg, Florida, rescinding ordinance 17-19 and re-adopting said ordinance to comply with procedures in Chapter 163.3184 Florida statutes for adopting large-scale comp plan amendments for property generally located east of County Road 44, west of Radio Road, and south of Poe Road, lying in Section 10 Township 19 South, range 28 East, and providing an effective date.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Discussion from the public? Roll call.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner Christian?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Mayor Robuck?
Yes. 5B?
I'll introduce, has to be read by title only. I can do this again.
Do it so well.
And ordinance of the City of Leesburg, Florida, providing a short title, providing findings and intent, granting a non-exclusive water use franchise to South Sumter Utility Company, LLC, their successors and assigns, providing for a franchise for a period of 30 years to construct, own, operate, and maintain a potable water service and facilities to provide potable water to areas within and adjacent to the village's age-restricted development, setting forth a term and conditions under which such franchise shall operate, providing for conflict and severability, providing an effective date.
Move for approval. Oh, first reading, okay.
This says that you're recommending that we approve on first reading. Are you wanting us to take a vote?
No.
Okay. I haven't seen that before.
Old language, it slipped in.
Okay. Any discussion?
I'll, I'm, I'm gonna say the same thing again, because we're talking about that same property out there. And I, and again, I think it's important, if we can, to tie a recreational aspect of that 470 property to Leesburg. And, and so here, we're talking about some, again, some easements.
I believe this is also property they're purchasing?
Same again.
Same again.
This, all the property, well, no.
No, this is not.
It's all the property they're purchasing, plus a little corner. That's in the, I think that's the southwest corner of 470 and, and the Turnpike. So this would be all the property that would ultimately be the villages.
So this is just a temporary easement until they, until they close, too, then?
No, this is the franchise ordinance...
Oh, the franchise ordinance.
That gives them the, the right to serve water services in, in the, in the areas that's legally described in the agreement, and then, or the ordinance, and then those areas are basically the areas that they're going to purchase, plus another piece that they've purchased from a different party.
Right.
But that's inside city limits.
Comments from the public? Okay, this will, uh, overturn next meeting. Uh, 5C?
I'll introduce, has to be read by title only.
Venetian Gardens Master Plan Phase 2 Ski Beach Update.
Yeah, this is, um, in the, if you, would you go to the, um, the photo that's in there? That's probably easiest for the public to see. It should, it's in the transmittal. If you could just, you could take that and just, that one, if you can make it, if you can make that as big as you can. There we go. Essentially, um, I'm gonna say back in July 16 or so, the City Commission approved, uh, the concept for Venetian Gardens Phase 2, and that included about nine tasks. And those tasks included, uh, the, the road improvement, the decorative fence that, that copies what we did up on Dixie and down along, um, Rogers Park and this area, and kinda closes off all this area. It included putting in the boat ramp, uh, or the boat ramp, or, uh, include the boat ramp and the boat ramp restroom, I'll come back to that. Included the bridge on Martin Luther King Island, which gets you from the splash pad over to Martin Luther King Island. Included the decorative lighting, um, included sodding and beautifying the point. It included putting in a couple of beachheads. And then it also included, uh, marina and dock improvements up on the other side of the basin. So the commission allocated $2.4 million to do all this work, and we've been slowly moving forward on it to date. The beachheads are in, we've come back, we've had to redo the bathroom. We were talking about placing the bathroom closer to the boat ramp, but because of soil issues, we relocated it back to the original position. That's under construction. So, the item that was before you, uh, that we wanted to bring up to your attention before you move into the next item on your agenda, which is the Paquette Construction Agreement, was to build basically these improvements, which was, uh, the roadway, the boat ramp, the recreational paths. And then the big modification that we added after we did this number was the extension of the recreational paths from about this point all the way up to, all the way up, I can never remember this road's name.
Venetian.
Venetian Drive, and then that would link back in over kinda by the community center. Um, so that added some costs. The, the bottom line is, is as we move forward, we've had these bids, we've negotiated. Um, the two, the two areas where, one, we underestimated and, and didn't get a good estimate on was the, the, some of the stormwater improvements that were required from the hardscaping. But most of all, the big problem that we have is with the boat ramp. We initially thought the boat ramp was gonna run about $150,000. The boat ramp is $650,000, and, and that was embedded in, um, the Paquette contract. Um, before we went out to bid, we even narrowed. I think at first, we originally had a four, a four-wide boat ramp in there. We reduced that to two to keep it minimal. Um, and, and we don't have a grandiose plan here. It was essentially prefab concrete, um, slides that we were gonna install and to get the boat ramp. Bottom line, that number, $650,000. So that number's really driving the train. Our recommendation in short to you is this evening, at that rate, we really don't think that we should move forward with the boat ramp. If it was, if we could keep it at that original number, I think it's something that the community wanted, but for that cost, it's, it's just prohibitive. So, um, if you go back now, Brandy, we put together some options for the commission. I know it's probably hard for the public to see this, but, um, we put together some quick options on how we think you can move forward with the price, the project. So if you move forward as we, as we showed, everything all in, just move forward, we think the project will be about $174,000, or $741,000 over budget. Again, most of that, 650 of that 741, or about 500 of that 741, is the boat ramp. But we, there, there's a way to fund that if you want. However, with all the other competing demands, again, I think that boat ramp number's just a shocker, which is task number three. So we recommend not to do that. Option number two and three are really kinda the same option. Um, and what it says is, let's not do the boat ramp. If you don't do the boat ramp, you immediately save that $650,000 from the budget. And we also think if you don't do the boat ramp, you can go back, uh, go back to that picture now, Brandy. We, you can go back, and if you recall, we, I think we showed a preliminary design of what this looks like. There was, there was about a 15-spot boat and trailer parking lot that went right back in here as part of this road design. So if you don't do the boat ramp, we could, do you have that picture? All right, this was, this was the design that you all reviewed, which was the, the road and recreational path, and the boat ramp being here. So if you don't do the boat ramp, you can eliminate, you can eliminate this portion of the parking lot. Are we still on the same number from Paquette that we talked the other day, the 890 number?
Yes.
Okay, so when we made, when we drew this up, we were guessing that we could reduce the Paquette contract by not just the one, the 650 for the boat ramp, but another hundred or so thousand dollars. And so we estimated 922 as a total Paquette contract. That number is actually, we got it down to 890. So the 890 includes doing the recreational path all the way up, um, as extended, and it includes putting in the roadway. DC, does that encapsulate most of the Paquette? So the Paquette contract would be the road and then the recreational path, all the way up, recreational path.
It does not include the, the path up through here. This is, that's...
So we got the, so we got that program somewhere else then in our estimate, if I recall?
And it's essentially 898.5, so it's, it's 900.
Okay, so 900. Um, but I know we have the extension, and we have that programmed in somewhere else in here.
Do you think it's included?
Uh, the decorative fence, it's in the decorative, it's in task two. So we've got that embedded in task two, on the chart, task two. Yeah, so if you go back, not to confuse you, but essentially, what, what we're saying is, if you do option number two, that would be complete everything else, but take out the boat ramp, and then we're about $16,000 over budget. So before you do task two, the hybrid of task two, option, option, I'm saying task, excuse me, the task over here. Option two is do everything except the boat ramp, and you're about $16,000 over budget. If you do the hybrid of this plan, is option number three, and option number three recommends that you do all the asphalt road improvements, all the improvements, except for that, the boat ramp and, um, the docks. Now, what we're recommending with the docks, however, is you'll note that option number three still keeps, now with the adjusted number, that'll keep just under half a million dollars available for docks. So our suggestion is to hold this in abeyance. Uh, Mike Rankin and I have been working with a developer. Our goal is to weave those dock improvements into the leases as part of the improvement that the private developer will make. And part of those negotiations would be that all the docks that are created and all the walkways that are created remain open to the public. And, and, and so it's not an exclusive use. So essentially, we're trying to shift those dock costs over to the private market, and if we can obtain that, then this month, then this money would be available to go back into reserve funds. And if we can't strike that deal, then we'd come back to you and say, go do option two. So our recommended, and by the way, option number four is really kinda blow everything up. Don't do anything. Uh, don't do the road, don't do the improvements. Do the decorative fence, um, and, and then you can actually throw, we figured up a little over a million dollars. Frankly, we don't recommend option number four. I think that defeats the purpose, that doesn't achieve our goals, but I think we're well within our ability to accomplish our goals, less the boat ramp with option three. So our recommendation is to go ahead and authorize staff. Um, now, save this for, which is the next item, depending on how you wanna do it, but we're recommending that you authorize staff to give the city manager the authority to execute a contract with Paquette up to, I wanna say, around number of $900,000 to complete the road improvements on Ski Beach.
Did you get a number on the cart path?
Was my cart, the recreational path, was, it was about, about, was it 50 grand? Was the number we were talking? The linear footage times that...
Which cart path are you talking?
The extension from here around...
No.
We were talking 3,000 feet...
Is that in the Paquette contract?
No, it isn't.
It is not?
It's not in the...
Okay. All right, then I don't need to talk about right now.
It's in the 450 estimate on the fence.
Yes.
We're not...
So it's not in the Paquette contract.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know if you've, if you've done any, I mean, I, I think that the, the additional boat ramps are kinda critical, honestly. And, and I don't know, is it an issue with the soil? I mean, is there, what's the issue that made it 500,000 more than what we had anticipated for just a ramp?
When we took the borings, uh, you go down, initially you go down about eight feet, and you've got real loose sand. And then below that, there's about a four-foot or five-foot layer of muck. And the engineering, uh, recommendations were that you had, we had to remove all of that in order to keep the boat ramp from floating.
I see.
So if you look at it, it's about 50 feet wide, it's 100 feet long, and it's a total of 13 feet down. And so you're, you're excavating and removing about 2,200 cubic yards of unsuitable soil. The other, the other thing was that there are, there's a total of 22 piles involved in the, in the docks themselves. Uh, and those piles are about 32 feet long, each, each one. So between, between removing the unsuitable soil and then driving the piles, um, that's how the, the price got as high as it is.
And that's where the other one was existing, the previous one? Is that in the...
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not exactly right on top of it, but it is very close. They're, they're like side by side.
And we did some, maybe some tests to see if anywhere else up and down was any better?
We, we did not jump around a lot. We took, uh, we took, we did do another boring. The, the two borings that we looked at were right here. We did another boring over here when we thought we were gonna move the restroom. That one actually had nine feet of muck. Uh, and then we did one back here, uh, that was, if I recall, was down around four or five feet. We also had, over here, where we're building the new restroom, we've got four feet of muck there. We're pretty sure there's muck everywhere.
And there's not another system in place that we can do without...
We brought, we brought the, we brought the guy in, uh, that Paco had subcontracted with. We, we sat and talked with him a couple hours, trying to figure out if there was some way that we could, we could get this in at a lower cost. And, and, uh, we did, we did figure out that we could pull it up close, we could pull it up the shore a little bit, which makes it a little bit easier to, to excavate. But, but that only, that only saved us a few dollars. It didn't, it didn't really bite into it the way we thought we were hoping we could. And he, he, he didn't have any other ideas.
Any other comments?
Is there, 'cause I know the county was interested in, in us doing this to be able to have more fishing tournaments and things here? Have, have we approached the county to see if they would contribute anymore to, to help carry this?
We, we did on two levels. We approached the county in reference to whether, is this boat ramp really needed to make sure that we continue to bring in the events? And they said, no. It wasn't, it was more of a want than it was a need, and we're, we're still competitive, it's still a great site. We've still improved this area enough to where we can do beach lanes... We've still improved this area enough to where we can do beach landings and that kind of stuff and still have Ski Beach available for, for how they're doing the fishing tournaments. And secondly, we, I think questioning some funding, whether we would get the funding from the county for it or not. I mean, I think we can go back if we ultimately want to get the boat ramp in. And, and if you want to do the boat ramp, we've come up with a mechanism on how you want to fund it. So I think, I really think you can go either way. Obviously, our recommendation is to be conservative, be, and reconsider when we, when we start talking about some of the other items that we'll be talking about in the next month or so.
And from the private, from the private sector, the lease you're talking about, how feasible or realistic you think the private sector will be with building?
I think we're pretty realistic that they'll build the, the docks. We've had, we've had some discussion with them, and, and he seemed very open to it.
With that?
Now, we haven't got, we haven't got that process going afar, you know, we have a market rate lease of what we think we should be able to lease the property for. So we, we haven't had the discussion and association with that final number. So if that final lease number starts going that way, you know, then we got to weigh the dock versus that, that perpetual lease return. My guess, though, is that we're still going to see a pretty fairly decent lease and get that pushed off. If we can do that, there would be half a million dollars sitting to go back and visit your boat ramp question. Without, you know, I'm trying, we're trying to keep that in that 2.4 million dollar circle. So a, a, kind of a, another derivative of two and three would be to go ahead and authorize us now to do the Paquette contract, see what happens with our conversations with the developer, and then if, if, if that's a yes and you can push that cost off, then you've still got that half a million dollar sitting, and then maybe you can come back and revisit the boat ramp question. But, but I wanted to bring this to the commission. We've been, we've been negotiating with Paquette now for about six months, and we need to get the project started.
As far as the, the docks go, I mean, I'd like to see those get started, and, but I understand, you know, in negotiating the lease there, but I, I wouldn't want to see it, it drag out too long before we...
I, I think I am a month away from bringing you a lease.
Because I mean, I, if, if it's something that's going to drag out, I would say, let's go ahead and build the docks ourselves.
I'll, I'll come back to, I, I think two meetings tops, I should have a lease expect to you.
Partner with.
I, I, in whatever plan we do, I'd like to see the decorative fence stay in, in what, in what we're doing here. And if we don't do the boat ramp, is there any, I, I know you kind of, are you, I understand option three is not having the additional parking around the boat ramp, but option two is having the additional parking still?
No, if we don't do the boat ramp at this time, I would eliminate the parking lot, because that's going to save you a little over 100 grand.
Is there, other than the boat, the boat ramp, is there?
There is some, there is some parking in the road design.
Yeah, but okay, and we don't think we need, need the additional there. And can you go back, go back to the map there? So the, and then the only other one, and can I, can I borrow your pointer just a, who's got that pointer for a second? So the only other thing, and, and I know nobody likes to talk about swimming pool, but, and you know, but on the swimming pool, if we did a swimming pool, I think the swimming pool should go right here. And so it's next to the, the splash pad. That's, I'm not saying I agree we should have a swimming pool, but if we did do one, and so I'm discussing if, if we are going to move forward with the swimming pool at some point, I would say, in anywhere in the city, we put it right here, which could involve taking out, and, and I don't even know if it would work, but it would take out the Boys and Girls Club building, and you probably would have to do some sort of a reconfiguration or, or, or block it off, doing a cul-de-sac in here of Venetian view, and so you wouldn't be able to drive through anymore. And so I only bring that up because we're talking about bringing that recreational path through there. And, and so I just want to point it out, so if we ever start talking about a swimming pool and we have a golf cart or recreational path going through there, it's like, okay, well...
Well, I have some thoughts on the recreational path, though. That's not on the agenda tonight, so I think we're going to be on the same page with that.
But then we have a problem with flow and bathrooms and pumping lift station, splash pad.
There is a lift station.
There's a lift station in there, yeah.
Right about there.
Right about where the middle of the pool would be.
But we're not, we're not, we're not going to do anything today that's going to, yeah, that's going to affect that, so I think we can, you know...
Because it might involve tearing out a recreational path or something down the road if that was to happen, so.
Actually, it wouldn't, because the recreational path would be on the other side of the road.
On the other side, yeah.
Well, yeah, I was a big proponent of the, of the boat ramp, but whether we say it happened or not, I can't get behind spending $650,000 on it. I mean, that's just, I, I, I probably wanted that as much as anyone other than maybe Commissioner Hurley, but that's just, that's a lot of money. I don't, I don't see any way we get, get a, a return on that, especially when we have four boat ramps already, and we're not, they don't need them for the tournament, so anyways. So I guess you, you, we need to approve one of these options?
Well, this was a discussion item before, because the next thing, the next item is the, the Paquette contract, which puts this discussion in motion.
And I'd like to, I hear some public comment, because I think maybe some people have some ideas, and maybe we haven't thought about, about this too, or?
Sure, yeah, we can go ahead and take them now, sure. On the discussion item, does, do we have discussion from the public on this?
My name's Tom Gizard, live here in Leesburg a long time. I, I, I share your concern, spending $650,000 on a boat ramp, which sounds extremely high. And I wonder where the $150,000 estimate came when, when we first started?
DC.
Excuse me.
I just, I, I didn't, I didn't anticipate that we'd have to, especially with the ramp that was not that far off.
Right. Well, I, I, I just wondered if there are other, and I see phase here with Paquette, if there are other contractors that could look at that and possibly do it a lot cheaper than $650,000?
And on the procurement, I mean, we bid it, it was a bid item, and Paquette was the only bidder. So we, I think we've worked in pretty good faith with them, within our procurement procedures to trim this up as best we can. We even re-engineered the road a little bit. We saved, we saved a couple hundred thousand dollars on some redesign of the road after the bids were out.
No, I just would, I hate to see the, the aspect of those boat ramps going away, because I think there'd be a huge draw in continuing to attract large, high-class fishing tournaments.
You? Any other comments from the public?
I forgot about, about, forgot about the docks. I like the idea of putting the, the responsibility for the additional docks at the marina particularly, and in front of the restaurants, on the developer of those restaurant sites and the redevelopment of the marina. I like that idea. Saving the money that you can do, put the, put the boat ramp in.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, we'll move on to five.
I just have one thing then, since you said that, is that, so if, if we don't do the dock now with Paquette, but then later we decide we do want to do it, or the boat ramp, would, would that, would our number go up to have to remobilize and everything to do that, or?
I, I would guess it would go up a little bit. I don't know that we would get any better competition on, you know, any other people, anybody else interested in bidding it. But doing it as a standalone project is, you're, you're going to have, you're going to have a little bit different.
Can I modify your comment a little bit, DC? You know, and, and I appreciate where DC's coming from. I think that, I think the, the boat ramp question becomes a matter of, of, of time. And like I said, our intention, we've had several conversations with the potential restaurant pad developers. My hope is, and, and my goal is to get this lease to you next meeting or the meeting thereafter. And so we will know in the next month what we can get as far as dock improvements. And if there is that money, then maybe that will help us negotiate with Paquette on revisiting the boat ramp question, because it will be in his process of mobilizing or in the middle or beginning of this project. So we just, we'll play that card as best we can. Now, DC's already given me the look like he doesn't agree with me, but...
As we get into this, I think we can find out real quick, is there support for $650,000 boat ramp? Whether we have the money, say, if we have the money saved, because if there's not support for it, then, then it doesn't matter. If there is, then it matters a lot.
I, I wouldn't have, I would be inclined to, to, to do it. I mean, if that's what, what we're doing out here is to increase the, the boating activity and to give opportunities for more boat recreation, that, that I'd be, I'd be inclined to, to consider it, if, if we've come up with the money somewhere else.
Right.
You know, to help.
Well, I think that, I mean, it's, it's, it's a hard nut to swallow, but, I mean, if, if that's what it costs, that's what it costs. But I think that that boat dock is going to be imperative to the activities on Ski Beach. You know, and, and, and not just on fishing tournaments, but we're getting back to something that we've been talking about for years. If you're talking about quality of life and activities on Ski Beach, now somebody's got to go all the way around, you know, and put their boats in at the boat docks now, and then drive all the way back around, or, you know, have, it, it's just, it's totally a different thing. If your family's parked up over here picnicking and playing frisbee, and you have to go and park, plus, you know, I don't know if you guys have been down much in the summer, but the parking is horrendous. It's so limited for boats down there. I mean, you have trailers parking all down along the ball fields and out in front of the arena, inside the community center parking. And right now, that's not a big deal, but when we reconfigure the community parking, that's going to totally change the accessibility of that big parking lot right now in front of the boat club where boats can park. So I, I mean, I really think that it's imperative for activity on Ski Beach, other than the, the fishing tournaments. I, I, I think it's just going to be a, a key element to making that active and a success.
That's a good point on the, the parking with the new design. On the docks, though, however, I, my understanding is, we weren't talking, we were talking about like limited dockage for the ramps.
I meant ramps, I didn't mean to say dock.
Oh, okay, all right. I, if so, I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
I don't, I don't want to waffle on you. It's always hard to read where the commission's going to go and what those, those really root priorities are. And the boat ramp was a root priority. And having said that, I don't want to walk in here and tell you to build a $650,000 boat ramp. I want you to get, men are, you're crazy. But I also hear Commissioner Hurley's passion, Commissioner Bowden, I hear some of your passion, I hear some of the audience's passion on the boat ramp. So having visited that, let me just go back to give, and, and the purpose of this conversation was so you're informed and you know what to do. I think all of these options that we put up for you, one, two, and three, were all reasonable. I, I hesitated putting in option number four, because I didn't want to kill projects, but we've kind of been a little circuitous lately, so I wanted you to see everything and be informed. If you really want to tender the boat ramp option now, this is a real possibility, and I would encourage you doing it now. And the one modification to this number is, you can put aside this dock number, okay? And if you put aside this half a million dollars for the docks, then you're only at about 250 over budget. And then you can come back and do the docks later, or in a month, you're going to know if we can get the docks number out of private developer. Even having said that, let's say we're going to keep everything in this right now. Your number that you're over is 741. So let me talk about, because I feel very comfortable that this is a number, I know it's a big number, but it doesn't kill you financially, and if you just look at Brandy right now, she's shaking her head agreeing with me. Okay, so this is not me trying to voodoo everybody here. This, this number is here. Now, it does pinch other projects, it will, but if this is the priority, and it has been for the past three years, this money's here. And here's how you get there. Number one, we still, we have some money actually left over from phase one. When we put up the extension of the fence, there's $73,000 there. We're ready to roll that over. That's going to be in your rollover items, and you're going to decide on the next couple months. Number two, we have the good old elevator. We keep budgeting 80 grand for that, it hasn't broke down yet, so in last fiscal year, '17, we still have that money, that's a rollover. We played a little bit of roulette and said, okay, in '18, we're not going to budget that money, and if it breaks down, we'll just go to reserves. So now I'm just doubling down on that bet. So, so there's 80 grand there. Third is, there's still, when we did the fiscal year budget, there was about $150,000 that we couldn't decide how to spend, and that was art money and different stuff. That still, you can go grab that money. And then last, that brings you down to the good old fashioned reserve. You know, we're still sitting up there at a pretty good number, so to go grab half a million dollars to get this done, it's not a crazy, that's not crazy. And especially in the light, if you want to sacrifice docks, hoping in a month that we can get it done with, with the developer, and I, I feel pretty good that we can. And the only, the only flip side of that equation that you're going to see is maybe a little bit of a reduction in lease and rental amounts, but that's really not going to be a total net loss, because that's money that you don't have in your pocket right now. So if, if, if developer says, yeah, I'll put in the boat ramps for you, and he knocks, say, I don't want to throw numbers out publicly, because we still got to negotiate it, but if he throws a X percent off of that number, because he's going to put in X, Y dollars of docks, that's a good trade-off, and that's not a financial hit to you, because it's revenue you don't have. So putting in the boat ramp now does make some sense. You're sitting on half a million dollars that you can shift around by delaying the boat ramps. And there's still a reasonable chance that you can do everything now and tell us to execute the Paquette contract in the full amount, which I think is 1.8 million, 1.6 million, and tell us that the next item, and then tell us to hold off on the docks and report back to you on the docks. Worst case, worst case scenario in that, we can't get the docks done, and so then in fiscal year '19, we go program that with new money. Or next, then we go grab some money. So, so really, if you value the boat ramp more than the docks, then I would say, let's put off the docks. You're still sitting pretty close there to your number, and I think there's still a way to get it done.
Well, if, if you don't mind me reaching out to the audience, I mean, you know, Tom Gizard has been here for a long time, and, and a realtor. Martin Boyd is in the back with the, the boat club. And if you don't, I mean, putting you guys on the spot, do you feel that, that I'm correct in saying that that boat ramp is imperative for Ski Beach activity and, and for people trying to do stuff on that side?
If you have the money to do it, yeah.
Yeah.
But I think the docks are more important than the ramp.
Do you?
But I think it'd be great to go off, but the docks are definitely...
Oh, yeah.
Well, aren't we going to have some more money on Wednesday?
Wednesday's getting put off till Friday.
Friday.
And... Let Tom finish real quick.
Yeah, I mean, the ultimate thing, if you, if, can we, we could probably delay this a month if you want. You know, you can come back and make...
$5,000. Let, let Tom say.
I agree with Martin that we really do need the docks, but I, I've had a conversation with the central developer, and I get the feeling that he's going to put in those improvements.
I do, too. I think, you know, I, I, I don't want to, I don't want to jam the square peg in a round hole, but I feel pretty comfortable that, I feel pretty comfortable that moving ahead with the full project is within your financial ability. And I feel pretty good that we probably can get those docks shifted up to the private developer. And even if you can't, you know, I think a six-month delay on the docks while we wait for things to cycle is probably reasonable, because between managing road construction and boat ramp construction and recreational path construction, we're not going to be, we're not going to get the docks done before all this does anyway, and then that cycles right around to budget time.
Well, and then the...
So the trade-off, so the trade-off actually is, okay, we want everything, we can get everything, but we can't get everything built before the next cycle anyway. So if you want everything, and the boat ramp needs to be ranked, and we want to stay reasonable with our spending, okay, let's try to get the docks built, or try to get the boat ramp built now, get the docks in the private developer. And I'm, I think the way just the timing will be is, by the next cycle comes around, you can just make the docks a priority in the next funding cycle.
And even if they didn't fund, the private sector didn't fund the whole thing, I mean, you know, they may fund 300 of the five.
It may be a Georgia thing. But I do, I think, and Mike will, I think, would attest to, I think, we feel very good that we can get that cost shifted.
So you say you have this, my next meeting, or two meetings from now?
Yeah.
Why can't we just wait and do it all at the same time, so we'll know what we're doing, whether it's supposed to vote on something, we don't know where we are with the private developer?
We, we can do that, but I didn't, I just wanted to get this project moving, too.
$500,000, I can wait two weeks and see where I'm at.
You might wait four, but...
I can wait, I'll wait a month, $500,000, half a million dollars. Think it's worth it, and then voting on the $650,000 boat ramp and not knowing if you're going to have the $500,000 or, or whatever contribution the private developer's going to make.
I do think waiting would potentially give Mike and Al some leverage, because if the leverage is, if you put in these docks, the commission's going to put in a boat ramp, which would be good for their project. If you don't put in the docks, I don't know that, that you're going to get the boat ramp.
And we both know, do everything tonight. And we both, now, do everything tonight. What's negotiations? You've already voted to do it, so why would I do anything? You guys already voted to spend all the money. You done brought the law, man?
Well, no, I think we've got an issue with, you've got a contract hanging out there that they've given us a prize, but if we, if we wait another month, where's that going to be, or kind of?
We're, we're double checking.
Yeah.
Well, if you guys vote no, and then...
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote no. That might start us over again.
It's tough, because it's, I mean, that's a lot of money for a dock, especially when we consider, or a ramp, when we consider where we were starting with. But, you know, this is, this is a huge basin out there, and, and I think what Commissioner Hurley is saying that you really utilize the Ski Beach area, it seems that, you know, having the dock there, but I'm not a boater either, and so I don't, I know, I don't know, is there, is the demand that significant? And it seems like it would be with a basin that size.
If you go back to that picture.
I think what he talked about on both sides of parking and boat.
You know, the issue is, one, the parking is a definite problem. But trying to explain to you, you know, let's just say I was going to take my family for a day and you were going to meet me, you know? I would have to put my boat in at the current ramps, and then I'd have to drive my truck and trailer all the way around to Ski Beach and drive my boat across so we could hang out all day. Then I'd have to go all the way back around, or I'd have to leave my truck and boat trailer there, and then come across on the boat, and then bring everything across the lake, or, you know, where most people, they're going to...
He wasn't going to get out if there was no ramp.
Yeah, because we've beached it now. That's the whole beautiful thing about that.
I think the big thing is the parking issue. And that's why, I mean, I said I was against it, but when you brought up that, I worry with us pulling away, basically, we're adding car parking, but we're pulling away trailer parking. And where are these boat trailers going to park? And is that going to cause a lot of conflict with the community building and with the restaurants? And...
They'd have to. I mean, there's not an option.
Yeah. So I don't know if we can approve the...
The answer was, he'll, the contractor will work with us, but he'll want some, he'll want some wiggle room if materials go up at this stage.
So can we, can we, would it be better for us to approve the first part of the contract? The $900,000 now, and then approve the remaining amount?
If...
A couple of weeks?
My suggestion, my suggestion is, if, if, if you all want the boat ramp, then I think we need to execute the contract now.
I thought your initial recommendation was to approve the $900,000.
Yeah, my initial recommendation was not to do it at all, the boat ramp at all, until it sounded like two and a half, three commissioners started liking the boat ramp option. But so if you want the boat ramp, A, I don't think it's going to get any cheaper, B, I don't think there's going to be any designs that bring it down. I think that's what the number is. And I think if you want the boat ramp, I think the docks is the flexible piece in there.
And we, and worst case scenario, we get the docks on the next cycle.
Yep.
Worst case scenario.
Worst case scenario. Worst case scenario is you get the docks on the next cycle, and it's probably going to be that.
The new boat ramp should make the leases more valuable because now you don't have...
I would, I would think.
The parking issue.
I think, I think if you want the boat ramp, you do it now. Just get this thing built. We got it executed. I don't, and that's not, that's not go fever, but that's just, that's just realistic.
And what other projects you said would be pinched?
Um, you know, I think the other projects, your pool project, make you pinched a little bit, depending on where the closing goes with the fiber deal. You know, you're still sitting on 5 million. You, you know, worst case scenario, you're still sitting on 5 million in your reserve, even after you take this half a million out. You're still sitting at, looking at probably, let's say, worst case...
Excess reserves?
Excess, above the, above the eight.
Okay.
Above the eight, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
Above the eight. So you were still sitting around 13 million instead of the recommended five. Okay? So you're still sitting on a good number there. And, you know, let's say worst case scenario is the fiber deal doesn't get done, and we've got to give up another month of revenues for IRUs, you're still going to net 7.5 million-ish on the fiber deal. So there's, you know, there's 7 million around the corner. So I don't think you're in a bad, we're not going to get everything we want, but we're in a very good position.
Let me just, an overall picture of this, and, you know, if you look at what, what Venetian Gardens has been the last few years and where it's heading, and you look at what, what you've got here, I, I don't, I personally don't know the value of, of the boat ramp there, but it seems to me that having a boat ramp over on that side has, has that extra value. And if that's what it costs to do it, and it has, and it has a significant value to Venetian Gardens and the use of it, if that's what you have to pay to do it, and it's, and it's going, it's going to last for a number of years, decades, I hope, to, if you put that in there. And, and I know we're not talking about a swimming pool, but if you end up doing a swimming pool and you put it over there next to the splash pad with what we've done with the splash pad, the pavilion there, the, the playground, you're doing your community center, you still have the ball field, and you've got the canals there, you're going to have docks and a restaurant, you, I mean, you've got a full, you've got a full, you know, destination area there. And, and to not do it is just taking away one piece of a, of a complete, a complete venue. And it's not that you couldn't have that venue without it, but it seems, it seems a piece of a, of a complete venue to have it over there. The way it appears, it just, just looks that way to me. Don?
Well, it appears that there are at least three votes to, to get this done, so maybe we could just get a motion to...
I'm moved to approve.
Contract on 5D.
If you move into the, you can move into the next item, which is a resolution.
5D, so...
And then you just have, I think, if you can just commit the motion right back to execute the full contract with Paquette, that means do the boat ramps and everything, and that's about a $1.6 million contract.
So someone can introduce 5D?
I'd be proud to introduce it.
Resolution of the City Commission of the city of Leesburg, Florida, authorizing the city manager to execute a construction services agreement with Paco Inc. for improvements to Venetian Gardens in accordance with the improvement option approved by the commission and providing an effective date.
Okay, just, just for the record, the contract with Paco is 1.6485, $1,648,500.
Okay.
Got a second, anyway?
I'll second.
Discussion.
Think we did it.
Did it? I do have a question for DC before we prove this. Is there a way to ensure that they anchor that thing down so a future commission can't rip it up this time?
There'll be TNT underneath there.
Roll call.
Well, you, we'll see if there's any discussion.
Any discussion from the public?
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Bowen?
Yes.
Commissioner Christian?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Mayor Robach?
Yes. Okay. For our regular agenda, we have, we have city attorney items?
Nothing tonight, there.
City manager items?
Nothing for you this evening.
Al, please, will you bring up the right of first refusal on the women's club?
Yes, that's right. I did have right, the women's club is under contract, back to the picture, behind that. Elise, what was the number? It was 300 and something?
300,000.
Yeah, 300,000. Once upon a time, and I think we still have first of right refusal for that parcel. So I don't know if you guys want to entertain the, the city invoking our first right of first refusal on that. Are you familiar with that, Brad?
Not at all.
Is it under contract?
It's, is it under contract?
It will, if I sign with the first.
And so, as I run, I got a caller today from someone who was asking about renting the women's club. They were trying to have an event. I was planning, October, said community building be torn down, and options, where else could you go to rent a facility in Leesburg that was economical for a birthday party? And for about 20 minutes, I kind of scratched my head because I really wasn't a place to, to rent at Leesburg, so.
Rogers Park?
They went there, but it wasn't big enough. They wanted 150 people, they wanted 150 people. It was a grown people party.
Gentlemen, the women's club will be for rent until the day of closing, so if you wanted to contact them, that's fine.
Could I ask what the buyer proposes to do with it? Because that would be integral to the decision, I think, to know what you're buying into or not buying into.
It's going to be a church. It's the same church that has been renting for the past two years on Sundays.
I don't care, I mean, whatever. I don't care. I guess, because I would be, a park would be maybe an issue, the conflict of, then I guess historical significance, if we think it's historical. It's the historical man right here, I don't know the historical significance of us.
I mean, in light of today's conversation, barring the city putting, putting a pool there, I don't, I don't see that that is an integral piece. I think if it was, if the city did put a pool, as Commissioner Bowen suggested, then I think the only interest in the women's club would be to, to knock it down, to expand the parking lot. I don't think you need that to put the pool there. So I don't, I don't think this is a piece that you have to have.
I ain't going to vote against the church.
I think we've exceeded our budget on a few projects recently, so maybe the nice-to-haves...
How do you judge people have that one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Privacy.
Okay.
So the, those are, those are my matters.
Okay. Public comments? Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Bowen?
Yeah, I, I just, just to follow up on that, I think that's, I, I look forward to seeing all this. I think, you know, when this all gets completed, it's going to be very nice and an attractive part of Leesburg, and I think it's just going to continue to get better there. So I think they did the right thing to do that little bit of money, but I think it's the right thing to do.
Can I still do public comment?
I'll, you have my time.
You can use your time, sure.
Ain't going too fast.
That's right, you're going too fast. Gosh, I wish I'd been up here with you when you had all this money. I'm going to go back to a time a few years ago when times were tough, and we went through the city and we cut, cut, cut. And one of the things we cut was the library, two days a week that it's not open. And I don't think this is nearly as much as you've all just spent down here. I mean, a small, and I think you should consider opening it either one more day or two more days. I speak for people that don't have boats. They don't, I mean, everybody uses the library, the old people that can't do boats anymore, the, you know, children, I mean, everybody uses the library. And I just want you, when you have all this money, these millions of dollars to spend, that you will consider the, the library.
Al, would you get us a...
Thank you.
I, I will, I will also note, though, that these, these are special dollars and reserve dollars, not operational dollars.
No discussion on public items, we'll take them in consideration.
What's that?
I said, I just, public comments, we'll take them in consideration, but, you know...
No, but I mean, what'd he say about reserve and operational?
These came from reserves.
Trying to separate capital with reserve and special revenue dollars and using operational dollars with general revenue.
Okay, but we're not going to, we're not going to have debates during public comments.
Okay, I just wondered.
But we do appreciate them, and we will, we will come back at a later time to talk about that.
I just, I just had one other thing. I know we're working on one of those donation ordinances or something for the, the donation bins. I just saw another one pop up, I don't know, overnight or over in front of Las Palmas over there, and it's like right off the sidewalk, and we can get something going on that. Is there a no prohibition on those right now the way they are? They can just throw them up next to the sidewalk and...
I think that's the case, but I, I think that's the case, but I also know that we've got some, we've got the ordinance around the corner. In fact, I think it's either gone to or about to go to the P and Z board.
Yeah, they, they look bad, and I don't know how they get away with using a parking spot to put that on, and then once you put one on it, so they're going to use another parking spot to load things, to, yeah, to throw their couches and stuff there on that. So if we can take a look at that one particularly and just see if there's anything we can do about it now, but if, at least we can get that ordinance moving along.
To my recollection, it has been the planning commission already. It should be ready to come to the city commission.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Christian?
Nothing tonight.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yeah, two things. For those of you that didn't see the article in the day of the commercial, once again, I was very proud of our law enforcement and public safety personnel. It showcased two of our officers, a supervisor and a patrolman who is also a field training officer. We had a five-year-old that got shot in the stomach, and while they were on a call, and the supervisor was actually EMT certified, loading him in a patrol car, took him to hospital, and they flew him to Shands, and he made a recovery because of that fast action. And I just think that it's important to recognize the caliber of people that we have in our agency and to give them a little credit and be thankful for the job that we get for them. And even one of ours is here back there. Yeah, you can give him a hand. They're all good guys, man, absolutely. And then the second thing is I just want to remind everybody, I have, for some reason, stepped out for Mardi Gras. And as King Rex, I really want to, since I'm the only commissioner that's doing it, I really want to call out all the, I want all the support that I can get for Mardi Gras, too. Right, Jay? Hey, all right. Go Mardi Gras. That's it.
Commissioner Dennison?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Robach?
First, I think we need to pass a resolution excusing Commissioner Dennison. Our charter only allows you to miss three, actually, after missing three consecutive, you're automatically off the commission.
Do we have to?
No.
Have to. You do that.
I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to excuse Commissioner Dennison.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Comments? Comments from the public? Roll call.
Commissioner Bowen?
Yes.
Commissioner Christian?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
No, yes.
Mayor Robach?
Yes. Okay, and then I attended, along with Commissioner Christian, the MLK breakfast, the kickoff for the couple of weeks of events we have going. It was a nice event. We had people from all over the county, and then there's a parade this Saturday, and then a whole, whole bunch of events. We all got stuff on. I had a question, I was looking at Orlando, at ordinance from Orlando, but I noticed that they pass a lot of stuff on first reading by consent somehow. Is that something their charter allows them to do, or is that something we can do?
Uh, our charter requires the two readings.
Okay.
And so does state statute, so.
Okay.
Orlando is, or, Orange County's a charter county, so they may have a different setup.
Okay. And then I did ask Fred and Al to work on basically copying Orlando's panhandling ordinance, bringing it to us. It's, they've litigated it, it's in compliance with potting jurors, my understanding, but it allows us to, I think they, we can ban asking people in cars for money, and then you can, like, restaurants can be off limits, and it would allow us to have a little more teeth in terms of, of what, what we're doing. So that'll be coming up for us to consider. And then it was brought up, I believe Commissioner Bowen brought up citations for code enforcement, and the problem was how do we prosecute them? But now we have an agreement with the state attorney's office, we're like 30 bucks an hour.
That's my understanding from the police department.
So I think we have some opportunity with code enforcement to actually issue arrests or citations.
Yeah, you issue citations. So let's say, for example, it's the panhandling, and when you, you issue them a citation instead, or if somebody's selling, you know, these pop-up things, somebody stops and sells velvet rugs or something, you can issue them a citation and, and so they don't get a chance to stop, they just have to, they get fined.
So I think we need to find out with, with code enforcement, you know, what can we do additionally with, we already have the ability, but now they'll take seriously. And so that will be good. And that's it. Meeting adjourned?
Thank you.
All right, Elise?